We're gonna start, we're gonna start in one minute. Counselors. We're gonna start in one minute. Call to order. Monday, City Council meeting of Monday, March 27, 2023 will all rise and salute the flag.
Roll call of the members, Councilor Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna. Here, Councilor Morbeto.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselsky. Here, Councilor Powers. Here, Councilor Rizzo.
Here.
Here, Councilor Serino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Silvestri.
Here.
Here, Councilor Visconti.
Here.
Here, Councilor Zambudo. Absent, Council President Keith.
Here.
Here, forum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of March 6. Calendar item number three, public hearings. Hearing called is ordered on a loan order in the amount of $6.4 million for costs associated with the demolition and construction of the Alden Mills Point of Pines Fire Station.
Thank you. This is an open, I'm sorry, this is a public hearing and we're gonna have proponents and opponents, so if I can ask for any proponents in the audience wishing to speak?
Thank you, Mr. President, City Councilors.
Just name the address. We know who you are.
I'm Chris Bright, Revere Fire Chief, 400 Broadway. As you can see, we have half the fire department in the room tonight. We're very excited to move the Point of Pines Fire Station project to a reality and start building it. I think many of you aware of a lot of the difficulties we've had to get to this point. You know, we originally got our loan order back in 2018 and of course, that was 2019, just before COVID, and then we know the rest of the story would happen. And we also know how the cost of materials and the supply chain issues throughout the country, throughout the world, the past few years. So now we know what the price of the fire station is going to be. We have that number. I know many of you have sat in on those Zoom meetings and we've had scores of them over the past few years. So it's been, it's been very, very difficult. We worked our hardest to bring it to this, this moment, and I'm asking each and every one of you to vote for it and let's, let's build this fire station. It's, it's, it's critical for the public safety. The station is essential, not just for the Point of Pines, but for response times throughout the whole city. So thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Proponents?
Hi, I'm Kevin O'Hara, president of the local 926 Revere Firefighters and captain on the job. I've got almost 20 years on the job. So I come here, come to you tonight in support of this project that we've been, it's been a long time. I'm gonna say 10 years fighting hard, and we've been talking about doing this for almost 20 years since I got on this job. Now, when you, when fight, whenever a time I come here to this podium, it's always a fight. I came here for reserve time, I came here for our insurance, I came here for the cell phone towers and our contracts. We never come here and complain. You don't hear any firefighters complain, I think you guys all know that. We're very humble what we do. So what I want to make sure you guys understand is Engine 5 is the closest to the Riverside and the Point of Pines area. You're talking four to six minutes on response there. Now, we are one of the fastest growing cities in the state, and we are number two in fires in the state. It goes Boston, then Revere. We had 14 multiple alarm fires two years ago. And we are, and as, as since COVID, you know, the firefighters, we have doubled our calls in the last 15 years. We're up to 12,000 calls now, a year. We are running around the city, and not only are we running around the city, we're going to other cities. The other night at work, I spent five hours in Somerville. My other crew, Engine 4, spent five hours in Medford the same night. The next night, we came back to work, then went back to Medford again for seven hours. So when you stop pulling apparatus, regular calls, start pulling apparatus to other fires in other cities, and you lose that Engine 5, you're talking a good eight to 10 minutes before we get to that house down in Riverside or the Point of Pines. And when we get there, even when we're fully stacked, we are doing 110%. We go into these houses. Some cities and towns don't, because we're trying to save lives and we're trying to perish everything you have in there, because that's how much we care. So tonight, I'm asking you, until this public hearing is done, that you move to a motion to approve these funds. Thank you very much.
Any other, any other proponents wish to speak? Any other proponents? Come on up.
Stacy Rizzo, 510 Revere Beach Boulevard. And I just want to say, until I moved to Revere Beach Boulevard two years ago, I had no idea how often our fire department has been called down to Revere Beach, or Oak Island, or the Point of Pines. My husband and I, we sit there and we say, oh my gosh, another alarm. Even in our building, we have a lot of alarms that are false alarms, but even last week, we did have a fire in our building. And it's sad when you have to see Winthrop, Chelsea, Boston come in, but they all help each other out. It is just such a necessity to have one back down to the Point of Pines. These men and women need the help, they need this fire station, and our community deserves that fire station. So please release those funds.
Michael Tucker, 9 Elaton Street, Revere. I have to say that I'm very much in favor, and I thank all the administrations, prior administrations, every one of you counselors, this has been ongoing for so long. The delay with the DEP, now that's not there. Please vote this in tonight. Thank you.
Me again. Anthony Paziali, 51 Arcadia Street. I live in Oak Island. So the Freedmont Station is probably the worst loaded, worst located fire station in the planet. It comes right out onto North Shore Road. I have a CDL, so I can, I drive trucks as big as those fire trucks. And I watch those guys, and they're amazing at getting it out of there. Honestly, I don't know how you guys get back in or get out of there in the timely manner that you do. I could tell you this, I guarantee you that a truck coming from the new fire station, which I hope you guys put the money out there to build, would get to my house faster than the Freedmont Station, Friedman Station would. People, I mean, that, that place needs to be, I know you guys don't want to, let's not, we're not talking about building another fire station, but that fire station needs to go and this one needs to be built, so please protect my daughter. What, no, we're not getting rid of it yet! I may put it in another place! Make it better! All right.
Okay, rate it in.
Do you guys get what I'm trying to say? All I'm trying to say is, I love the firemen, we need this to protect our kids. So release the loot.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? I think there's a lot of proponents in the audience, right? Well, you can raise your hand, too. We'll get to that.
Good evening, I'm Loretta Lacentra, I live at 30 John Ave in the Point of Pines. And I just want to say that I hope that you'll all vote for this this evening. Approximately 20 years ago, when the Alden Mills Fire Station was shut down because of budget cuts, we were always promised that the station would reopen. Obviously, because of the decay of the building, we needed a new one. This area has, has grown exponentially over the past decade or more, so I hope that you'll all vote on this this evening. We've been waiting a very, very long time for this fire station. Thank you.
Thank you. Understanding maybe not everyone wants to speak at the mic, but can we just get a show of hands as far as proponents in the audience? Okay, great, thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak before we go to the opponents? Okay, hearing and seeing none, we're gonna close that side of the hearing. Any opponents in the audience? Anyone, anyone wish to take their life in their own hands tonight? Okay. Okay, hearing and seeing none, we're gonna close that side of the hearing. Any counselors wishing to speak? And I do want to start with Counsel Powers, this has been his baby. Counsel Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. The President is absolutely right, this has been a journey. From July 29, back in 2019, when the first bond authorization of 30, I'm sorry, $9.2 million was approved. Obviously, everything has gone up since then. Labor's gone up. Equipment's gone up. Anything needed to build that fire station has gone up. And there was talk about opening the old fire station before we tore it down. And we did an inspection down there, and that, that fire station, we would have had to put another $3 million into a losing proposition. And I say losing proposition because you could never put a ladder truck in that old fire station. And a ladder truck with all of the new development down on the Boulevard, on Ocean Avenue, and throughout the city, you need a ladder truck, okay? So the other thing we could put in there, now, we can put in there now, is a water rescue unit. We've just purchased one of those. That can go into a flood area with up to four feet of flooding. You look around the city and you look at the way the population has increased. There are more medicals. There are more traffic accidents. There's more flooding throughout the city. You need that station and you need it in a state, an area that's logistically located to address these problems that come up. I, I'm told by the fire department, I believe what they tell me, that Engine 5 is probably the second busiest station in the, in the city, okay? When Engine 5 is out, you're waiting for Engine 1, ladder 1 maybe, you're waiting for maybe Engine, Engine 4, ladder 2 up on Broadway, and certainly, I hope we're not waiting for Engine 3 up in North Revere, because that would be a travesty. But these are the reasons we need that station. It's so important to the city of Revere, not just to Oak Island, the Point of Pines, or Lower Revere Street, but through the entire city, that station is needed. And there are times, I've been coming home down Revere Street and I see Engine 5 heading up to Squire Road. What's covering the Point of Pines? I'll tell you one thing, I wouldn't want to be going to bed down there at night, knowing that that station isn't open and there's not apparatus very close to me. You know, the Point of Pines at one time was considered a sort of a part of the city of Revere, and it still is to some degree. We had a church down there, we, we had a school, we had a fire station. Now we're like a, an isolated area. And without that fire station down there, we remain an isolated area. So I'm asking my colleagues tonight to support this. It's so important to the city of Revere, it's so important to our future growth and to the residents that live in this city. Let's get it done. And let's, once we hopefully approve this this evening, let's get Mr. Viskey over there in the corner to sit down with the mayor and the bids are in. Let's negotiate that and get the, get the groundbreaking down there and get the fire station built. And that'll take about a year probably. Thank you. And I just want to thank my colleagues and the mayor and everybody else for their input in this, and my former colleagues that are no longer with us. That was an 11 to nothing vote for the $9.2 million that we did four years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Morbeto.
Counsel President, just mention them for the record, too. Counsel Powers did mention the water rescue. Now, with Engine 2 going in, we could have a boat in the water within three minutes. Everywhere else, we're doing 15 minutes to get a boat in the water. And there's a lot of people down the beach, and we get water rescues all the time in the summertime. All right?
Great point, thank you very much. Counsel Morbeto.
Thank you. So the proposed project for the fire station in Point of Pines is long overdue, we can all say that. The area where they want to put the fire station, I'm totally against. No, I'm just kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. I've been a proponent from when they said, a long time ago, when I first got on the council, when John kept saying, I want a fire station, I want a fire station. And people would tell me, oh, it's just pipe dreams, it's just pipe dreams. And I'm like, this guy kept fighting and fighting, and it's coming to fruition, and that's what I like to see. So the area that it serves is so densely populated that not only will this provide, as Mr. O'Hara said, rapid response on land, rapid response in the ocean as well. So let's think about that. Each and every one of these firefighters move with urgency each and every day they're on the job, not knowing what they're gonna face. Why, not only do I support my colleague to my left, rather than put this forth to the Ways and Means Committee, I say we vote on it this evening and take a roll call.
Counsel McKenna. Okay, any other counselors on this side? We'll go down this side. Counsel Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I don't know if Anthony Paziali is still here, but there's RPD over here, they can escort you out after you told them you wanted to close the Friedman Street Fire Station. I don't know, that's the, that didn't go over very well. No, but obviously, I support this. There's nothing that, that I've done in my entire political life that I think, or that I believe is more critical to our community, and now more so than ever, public safety, both fire and police. We have a growing population. Unfortunately, I don't believe that either one of those departments is growing at the rate that they should be growing to meet the demands that we have now. I think it was Mr. O'Hara, possibly the chief, talking about doubling of the calls that, over, over, I think, the last 10 years or so. That's gotta put a toll on, on all of our firefighters. I know that it puts a toll across public safety in the city, so I wholeheartedly support it. I think the people in the Point of Pines have waited an awful long time for this, and with all that development along the beachfront, you know, response times are key. And one of the things that I remember during, well, during my entire tenure, certainly when I was mayor of the city, it was always a proud moment for me to learn about our city being amongst the best response times across the Commonwealth. And anything we can do to keep that and make that a reality is something I'm gonna support. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel, Counsel Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I can't see $6.4 million being better spent in the city. This is so way overdue, and I, speaking to people in that community today, they're already asking, when is it gonna be completed? So the RFPD has done a great job, the, the stress that they have been under last year alone in the amount of calls and the amount of fires that they have had to work through is just unbelievable, and I commend you guys for doing the job that you guys do. So I could not be more in favor of spending this money for the community that deserves that and the RFPD that needs it so desperately. Thank you.
Counsel Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I've been here quite a while, and I think the first 10 years of my tenure, I think I was chairman of public safety. And there were, there were no prouder things to do than, number one was to build a police station, along with that, we built a fire station, then we built two more fire stations, well, will be two more fire stations since then. So this is a proud moment, not just for me, but for the city, and this is so well needed. We, we, for years, we wanted a station there, and we're finally gonna get it. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, if it's okay to speak from the chair on this one, just to add for some comments? This, this has been a very long time coming, and I know that there's been some people in the city, specifically Counsel Powers, but the entire council, there has been zero argument and back and forth when it comes to supporting our public safety officials and supporting the Revere Fire Department. So this is a very easy decision for us tonight. We can't just ask for you to do the most and ask you to do the hardest work without providing you with the resources necessary. So this is a very easy decision for us, we're excited to be able to do this for you tonight. So of course, we're, I know I'm gonna be very much in support, and I can't imagine that our council would not be. So congratulations, and what I would ask is that this does go to a roll call vote, and if, unless any councilists have any, any wishes to discuss, and we can, we can get this voted on this evening. Adam Clark, would you call a roll?
Shall the City Council approve a loan order in the amount of $6.4 million for costs associated with the demolition and construction of the Alden Mills Point of Pines Fire Station? Counsel Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Morbeto.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Novoselsky. Yes, Counsel Powers. Yes, Counsel Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Serino.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Keith.
Yes.
Yes, the loan order is being approved.
Mr. President, suspension, suspension of rules.
Suspension of rules?
No.
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 You don't want suspension of rules?
Roll call.
Roll call.
So we can...
Roll call.
Vote for, so reconsideration on this, on this vote?
No.
No.
I think he called it.
No.
No suspension.
Doubt the call of the chair, if that were the case.
Call the roll call.
Call the roll call.
Roll, roll call to...
Roll call.
Madam Clark? Counsel Serino, did you have something? Go ahead, Counsel Serino. Yep, that's what's right.
Roll call to suspend rules, Counsel Cogliandro.
No.
No, Counsel McKenna.
No.
No, Counsel Morbeto. No, Counsel Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Powers. No, Counsel Rizzo.
No.
No, Counsel Serino.
No.
No, Counsel Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Visconti.
No.
No, Counsel Zambudo.
No.
No, and Counsel President Keith.
Relevant at this point, so, no.
No. Rules are not suspended. Next up is the Ways and Means Subcommittee report.
I don't believe anyone's gonna challenge this vote tonight.
This was a unanimous vote, Mr. President, this isn't going anywhere.
I don't think it needs to go to reconsideration. We'll talk to you about the rules of order later on, but in case someone wanted to sabotage us, thank you.
Thank you.
Want to call a recess or not? Rock and file out.
Yeah. Counsel...
Two-minute recess, please.
Two minutes, two-minute recess, please. Back to regular order.
Next up is the Ways and Means Subcommittee Report.
Okay. I have a minority report. The dissenting members of the Ways and Means Committee disagree with the views of the committee majority, and we respectfully submit the following report: that the City Council take a roll call vote on Council Order 23056, that the City Council send a letter to the Revere High School Building Committee requesting that the existing site of the high school be chosen as the feasibility study preferred option for submission to the Massachusetts School Building Authority and for further study during schematic design. Roll call.
Madam Clark?
Mr. President, may I have an opportunity to speak?
Absolutely.
Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah, he called the roll, that's why. But Councilor Cogliandro, please?
Thank you. So I wasn't going to speak tonight. So thank you for the leeway. I just asked everybody to let me get through what I have to say because there's a lot I want to start by talking about the first vote, one of the big votes that I ever had to take. I just got into this office, okay? We were told that if we did not vote on a certain site, that we were going to lose funding, and we found out that that was not true. So everybody's saying that you can't have it both ways. There was a lot of information that came out that made us change our votes because we were all all-in, and things changed. Finally, there was additional votes, and again, every time these people showed up, every time it was our turn to hear the news on anything, it was, "We need this right now, we have to submit this, you guys can't hold this up." All right, we played along for a couple more votes. And then finally, one meeting, they showed up, and it was $120 million more. And this council had every single right to pump the brakes and start asking questions, and that's exactly what we did because that's our responsibility. From that point forward, for two months, two months, we begged for numbers. We wanted to see numbers. How are we going to pay for this? Can the city afford it? What's this going to do to the people that live here? You know when we got those numbers, everybody? Five minutes, five minutes before we were supposed to vote on pushing through the schematic design and cost. Now, I don't care what industry you're in, I don't care who you are, that is completely unreasonable, and it's not fair to us to make such a huge decision for this city with such a tiny amount of time. Mr. DeVoe, you mentioned everyone needs to work together, sir, and I could not agree with you more, but that could not be further from the truth of what happened after that vote. Instead of us getting called in, three or four of us at a time because we can't meet all together because of open meeting law. Instead of us all being... There wasn't a shot at you, sir, I'm just...
No, you addressed my comments, so I would like to rebut at some point, so go ahead.
I just said that I agreed with you.
Okay.
Counselor, you got it.
Okay.
You agreed with me, but go ahead.
Thank you. That could not have been further from what happened. Instead of... Excuse me. Please don't interrupt me. I did not interrupt you. I understand, but let's... Please, I respected you. Please show me the same. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. Okay. So instead of us all working together, we, and getting called into offices and having small group meetings and really getting into the numbers and working together to make this happen, that didn't happen. Instead, our city leaders went back to their offices and smeared this council for a straight month. Disgusting. Absolutely disgusting. I would do anything for this city, anything. This is a part-time job. It is full-time for most of us. I work well over 40 hours a week on this job, especially lately. And to be so disrespected, to be so... I just got here. I've got no skin, and I don't consider myself a politician. I'm not on the in-crowd, I'm not a political insider, okay? This is about working together, and it did not happen. It didn't happen, okay? Even after the smear campaign by our leaders, okay, I still asked to have a meeting to talk about these numbers because everybody knows my concern has been about the finances of this project. That's been my number-one concern, okay? Even after that, I tried to meet with them. And the first meeting, so I had a meeting with the mayor and the CFO, it was canceled. That's okay, we rescheduled. And then when we rescheduled, I got an email the night before. And that email said, "You know what? You have everything you need. We want to know how you're voting. That's it. You have everything you need from an administrative standpoint." So I thought to myself, "I finally get a sit-down to go over these numbers," which I... They don't work, and I'm being told, "Never mind. You already have everything you need." That was very disappointing to me because I'm trying so hard to make the right decision, so hard. You guys have no idea what it's like to sit on this side right now. My risk has always been to take Wonderland off the tax rolls, and my stance has always been, "I don't want this at the existing site." It's never been about cost for me. I don't care if it costs $2 billion to build this school. I care if we can afford it. And the truth is that we can't. We can't afford it at Wonderland, we can't afford it at the high school, okay? We just can't do it. And it will cripple... This money will cripple the city. And there's no further explanation from anyone that's going to change my mind on that. I'm not willing to add more taxes. I'm not willing to add things like trash fees. I'm not willing to cut from our public safety budget. I'm not willing to cut our public works. I'm not willing to have anyone in this city lose their job. I don't want city departments that have five people to then have three. People have already been priced out of this city. Virtually no one from my high school class lives in this city anymore. They're all up north, okay? This will only get worse. I represent a lot of people that are the same generation as I am in this city. I own a home, I'm married, have two daughters and a son, two dogs, normal guy, just getting by. I've spoken to over 400 constituents on this issue, parents and teachers, okay, from Most of them are in a very similar situation to me, roughly my age, they own a home, they have kids in the school system. Some of them own businesses and understand the struggles that we go through, especially after COVID, especially client-based businesses. 98% of the people I spoke to want a school and don't care where it's built, and about 80% of those people agree that we cannot afford the building. So we need to go back to the drawing board because we need a school, and we need to be able to afford this school. Thank you.
Call a roll? It wasn't... I understand what you're saying. I think he was inadvertently addressing you.
Roll call, Mr. President. Roll call.
Roll call.
Roll call on the minority report. Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morbeto?
No.
No, Councilor Novoselfsky?
No.
No, Councilor Powers?
No.
No, Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Silvestri?
No.
No, Councilor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keith?
No.
No, the motion passes. Calendar item number five is the zoning Subcommittee Report.
Mr. President?
Council Powers, I'm sorry.
A lot of folks here don't understand what really happened, and I think you ought to explain it to them that what came out of the committee is not what we just... was just voted on. Because the new...
That's right.
But they don't... I can tell, they don't understand that this is happening.
My minority report was very clear.
I think he wants to explain the end verdict, yeah.
These are educators, I think they understand.
Hang on. Hang on, hang on. Madam... Okay. So if...
Can we explain every other motion that's been passed? We lost three.
Hang on, can everyone just calm down?
I've heard me that. I've had that before.
Everyone, take a breath.
Was I not in the middle of a report?
Would you like to...
No, no. Council President, you should explain what just happened.
Would you like me to?
Oh.
I can.
Okay.
Would the council like me to explain that?
Yes.
Okay. If you guys are good with that, fantastic. So what happened was, the minority report, even though in Ways and Means Subcommittee, the motion was voted... It was not... It was 4-2, I believe, and the negative. A counselor can submit a minority report and has asked for... The motion would still come in front of the entire City Council regardless, unless he didn't want to present it, and could be voted on, and it could pass or fail. The motion that came out as a negative from the Ways and Means Subcommittee has now prevailed in the full City Council Committee Meeting. So in essence, the motion presented that the City Council send a letter to Revere High School Building Committee requesting that the existing site where the current high school presides be chosen as feasibility study preferred option for submission to Massachusetts Building Authority has passed. Simple as that. Okay? Thank you.
Two-minute recess. Mr. President?
Can I ask a quick question, Mr. President? Can I ask two quick questions? Just two quick questions to counselor that spoke. Did you ever reach out to the school department to meet?
We're just going to take a quick recess, okay? Thank you.
Two-minute recess.
Did I ever reach out to the school?
Yeah.
We're going to return to order, but before we move forward, we're going to continue on with the agenda. I know that there's a lot of continued debate that people want to have, but we have to follow the rules of order, and we're going to follow the rules of order, so we're going to go in the order of the report that we're going to continue to come out with. So if I could just... We're not going to be discussing prior votes this evening. If things come up after this committee meeting, after this council meeting, you know, that certainly you have every right to continue to discuss. We are a small city, everyone here is very accessible. I will make myself very accessible, and I know that the other councils will, and that's going to be their choice. But we're not going to be discussing any items prior to the zoning Subcommittee for tonight. Thank you. Madam Clerk, zoning Subcommittee Report.
Yep. Calendar item number five, the zoning Subcommittee Report.
Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, we all know the zoning Subcommittee met, and item 23042 was voted out favorably, and I'd ask for a roll call.
Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Shall the City Council grant the relief requested by the applicant, subject to the findings and conditions from Site Plan Review and the zoning Subcommittee? Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morbeto?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselfsky?
No.
No, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted. Communications, calendar item number six, communication from the city policy writer and analyst requesting a public hearing for various amendments to the revised ordinances of the city of Revere relative to boards and commissions.
I believe we have Claire, if you can state your name and address for the record.
Claire Inzurlo, Ocean Ave. Just quickly...
Go ahead, continue.
Following the clerk's advice on how to proceed, I am requesting a public hearing. We have lots of stuff to go through, and I'm sure you all want to go home, so I have a lot of, you know, revisions, packets, and stuff to present at the Subcommittee meeting if it gets referred and at the public hearing.
This is going to go to a public hearing, and I know, and I appreciate, Councilor Sorino, request of the red-line items. I believe you got that, Councilor Sorino?
I got... Thank you, Mr. President, through you. I got the red-line items, but I would still... We're still unclear what the changes are with the Human Rights Commission ordinance because you are striking it, and I know you gave me the language of both to sit down and go through, and I can do that, but can you just... But can you just, can you explain and then send a memo about why you're striking it and why you are suggesting to replace it?
Yes, so when I came in, I had no history with the Human Rights Commission. I didn't know all the controversies surrounding it. And when I watched all the previous meetings, I saw that there's a lot of confusion with residents and with city officials as to what they can and cannot do. Some cities hold mediation. Some cities give themselves judicial power to subpoena witnesses to appear before them. Our city is very small. We have trouble getting members to commit to our boards and commissions. So we wanted to make sure our updates to the Human Rights Commission accurately reflected what they can do, you know, holding events, you know, MLK Day things, stuff like that, cultural celebrations, and kind of dialing back the power that they are alluded to have that they don't really exercise. And I'm happy to go through all of those changes with you.
Thank you.
That satisfies it. Thank you.
And so, as mentioned, this is going to go to a public hearing, and there'll be plenty of opportunity for more discussion if anyone wishes. Outside of that, all in favor? Order to a public hearing? So ordered.
Thank you.
Calendar item number seven, communication from the Director of Veteran Services requesting memorial pole locations in honor of several veterans. It's also noted that Counselor Silvestri is recused from discussion on this matter.
Hi, good evening.
State your name or title for the.
Good evening. My name is Julia Cervantes. I'm at 20 Harrington Avenue, Revere. I'm a veteran service officer. I come here before you this evening in hopes of getting your approval on the memorial dedications for the following Revere veterans. Sergeant Robert Malavoy, Corporal Anthony DiMarco Jr., Sergeant Elliot Schwartz, Private Vito Pizano, and PFC Angelo Tiro. The Veterans Department will plan with the family members to have times, dates, and locations of the memorial poles in honor of these veterans named above. The five veterans named above, along with two approved on the last meeting, will be all the memorial poles accepted for the calendar year of 2023. Some of the above-named veterans have been waiting several years due to COVID-19 and the inability to have their dedications.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Sorino.
Mr. President, thank you. I'm a bit chatty tonight. I'm sorry about that. So I just wanted to say thank you, and I, you know, all five of these veterans absolutely deserve this recognition. I would just be remiss if I personally didn't call out Mr. Angelo Tiro on that list. Mr. Tiro lived across the street from here. More accurately, I grew up across the street from him. And he was a really good guy. The family was incredible. And the family, in addition to Mr. Tiro, the family, that family, the Tiro family, has a long history of service to our country. And he would be so proud. His son-in-law was in the Navy. His grandson was, or is in the Navy. And his granddaughter-in-law, Mr. Tiro's granddaughter-in-law, is the first female commander of the USS Constitution. So that family is a very special family. They have given generations to our country. So I am so honored and happy to see him getting the recognition that he so deserves. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
And we're honored to do it.
Thank you. Counselor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, you know, two of the gentlemen on here, Elliot Schwartz and Vito Pizano, both lived in my neighborhood. They were good guys, you know. I grew up with them. You know, they were World War II vets. And I just want to clarify, I believe Elliot Schwartz is one L. So just, we'll check that out before we make the sign.
We will.
Okay? Thank you much.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Shall the City Council grant the veteran memorial pole locations as requested by the Director of Veteran Services? Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers? Yes, Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri is recused. Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambuto?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the motion has been approved. Calendar item number eight, communication from the Director of Veteran Services notifying the City Council of the updated protocols for the issuance and presentation of veteran memorials. Counselor Silvestri is recused from discussion on this matter.
All right, thank you again, members of the City Council. I'm also here before you this evening to discuss the change in protocol for veterans' memorials. The major change in honoring veterans with the memorial pole will be in who is eligible for the memorial pole. Okay? So all requests for veterans' memorials must be submitted through the Director of Veteran Service's office. The request must indicate the name of the veteran, the service, the rank, and the requested location of the memorial. The Director of Veterans will forward the request to the City Council requesting approval based on the veteran's discharge. The veteran would qualify for a memorial as long as their character of service was honorable, has served 20 years or more, served in combat, or was killed in a training accident. A veteran who has worked for the city or has been elected will also qualify. The veteran shall not qualify for a memorial if he or she has received a bad conduct or dishonorable discharge. Gold Star Mothers and Gold Star Fathers shall have the same rights as a veteran under the same conditions in paragraph two that I just read. The sign should indicate that the person named on the sign is a Gold Star mother or father. Gold Star Mothers and Fathers will also have a Gold Star on their sidewalk sign. A copy of the veteran's discharge, DD 214, must accompany the request. A veteran's memorial will have a Silver Star. A memorial sidewalk sign for a veteran killed in action will have this entered in the sign and the conflict or war he or she was killed in. The star will be gold in color. The city-state officials will have the seal of the city. The Silver Star will be added to the memorial sidewalk sign if the city or state official was a veteran. Only memorial sidewalk signs for veterans and the city-state officials' memorial signs will be decorated on Memorial Day with a wreath and two American flags. Only memorial stones or plaques for veterans and city-state officials will be decorated on Memorial Day with an American flag. Any former memorial established for a non-veteran before the approval of this dated protocol will be decorated with a wreath only at no charge. If the family of a veteran, Gold Star parent, or city-state official who served in the military requested a dedication and unveiling of a memorial, it shall be coordinated through the Directors of Veteran Service. The Director will work with the Department of Public Works Sign Division, the family, and the City Council to determine the exact location of the sign and the date of the dedication. The Director of Veteran Services shall be the caretaker of the list of all veteran memorials. The Department of Public Works shall be the caretaker and maintain all memorials. Decorations will only be done on Memorial Day. And that's it.
Very well spoken. I know Counselor Silvestri is wishing to speak, addresses on this? No? Any other counselors? Counselor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is slightly different from that was written when the former VSO, Nick Boer, was on board. And two things that really stick out are the color of the stars. The Silver Star is for a veteran. Those killed in action will be gold. In the past, they've all been gold. So that's a slight change. And the other thing about the non-veterans' signs that were put up around the city over the years were because people knew people, and they weren't veterans, but they put up the signs anyways because they were long-term family members and friends of friends. So a lot of those are still up. Some of them do have stars on them. They are decorated with wreaths and flags. So that's going to be an adjustment. Now, the old protocol also said that those people were going to pay $25 for the decoration of their sign for non-veteran people. So that's being changed here because the VSO felt that they were up, let them be up, and we can still decorate them anyways to a point where they're not veterans, just put the wreath up for them. So with that, you know, in general, I have no problem with this, and I hope that we accept it graciously. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors? This communication is going to be placed on file. All in favor? So ordered.
Calendar item number nine, communication from the city clerk requesting a revocation hearing for certain storage of flammable licenses for reason of non-payment and failure to register the premises pursuant to chapter 148, section 13 of the Massachusetts General Laws.
Be ordered to a public hearing on April 24th. All in favor? So ordered.
Calendar item number 10, I'm sorry, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro that the mayor's office and election commission work collaboratively to develop and send information packets to new residents. This information would include the current elected officials, contact info for city services, and a welcome letter. Considering there's been a lot of activity with selling and buying homes in Revere, the intent for this information would be to influence greater voter turnout as well as sharing information so new residents can know the city better. The city has so much to offer, and if you aren't on social media or are not sure which groups to follow, you can miss out on some pretty amazing events and establishments.
Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. So just to add a little bit to this, I did speak with Travel and Tourism. They actually called me in support of this, and they made mention of, you know, sending out postcards with QR scan codes on it just for people to have a one-stop place to get information. So I think it'd be beneficial to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Nope, sounds like a great motion. All in favor? So ordered.
Calendar item number 11, motion presented by Counselor Zambuto that the City Council direct the administration to ensure that communications submitted for consideration by the City Council contain sufficient details and/or backup documentation for the topic to be discussed. The open meeting law requires the topics listed on an agenda must be sufficiently specific to reasonably inform the public of issues to be discussed at a meeting. A broad topic alone is not sufficiently specific.
Counselor Zambuto.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pretty much speaks for itself, however, that we've been sliding away from the rules, and this is just a way of getting back on track. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? All in favor? So ordered.
Calendar item number 12, motion presented by Counselor Visconti that the mayor request a representative from Mastod and our state delegation to appear before the City Council to discuss the closure of the Sumner Tunnel planned for the summer and request the Tobin Bridge bus lane not be enforced during the closure to help alleviate traffic. The expected traffic congestion due to the closure will have a direct and negative impact on Revere residents.
Counselor Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. President. It was brought to my attention, and I'd like to get further discussion with Mass DOT, but it was brought to my attention that the Sumner Tunnel has intentions on closing for the entire summer now. If that is the case, it is going to cause congestion on the Tobin, and any relief that we can give those travelers on that bridge would help the city as well. So I'd like to know what their intentions are and what they can do to help the congestion on the bridge, during that closure. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is an excellent motion. Obviously, there's a lot of vehicle traffic that comes back and forth through our city, and in particular, people taking the Tobin Bridge as an alternative. That bus lane they have there now, I mean, I drive over the Tobin Bridge a lot, and there's not really that many buses, I think, that would warrant all the vehicular traffic to be over in just the far-left lane. So even if we could discuss with DOT making them HOV lanes or something, but just something to help while this tunnel is being reconstructed, I think it's an excellent motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Sorino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with Counselor Rizzo and Counselor Visconti, obviously. That bus lane on the Tobin Bridge has really become a disaster for our community, because what happens now is the traffic, you took an entire lane of the Tobin Bridge for a bus lane, and now the traffic during rush hour backs up to, actually, to your ward, to around Park Ave, Mountain Ave at times. And as always with the state, we get screwed when it comes to Route 1 and, you know, in terms of the transponders and the tolls and whatnot, and no sound barriers and none of that stuff. So the least they can do is, you know, suspend the bus lane. And I would argue, get rid of it because it was a stupid idea in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? So this could, we could vote on this tonight. I don't think that needs to go to committee. I think everyone seems to be in favor. All in favor? So ordered. Recused, you've got that.
Yes, thank you. Calendar item number 13, motion presented by Council President Keith that the City Council award Joseph Maglioni with a certificate of appreciation for his many years of dedicated public service to the residents of our community.
If I may, from the chair, actually, I got a number of contacts in the City Council. If we can add the entire City Council to this motion, if everyone's in favor of that, and we'll save, we'll reserve our comments for the night of the presentation.
Mr. President, point of information.
Counselor Novoselsky.
Nothing against Joe. He's a great, great guy. He deserves it. But I thought we passed a motion that we were going to honor retirees every month that retired the month before. But Joe, the only one in this case, or in the same thing with Chris Janino over the last month, so.
That was Counselor Morabito's motion, and it was for the end-of-the-year kind of celebration thing.
Okay.
It was supposed to be continuous each year.
I see.
Oh, so it's just at the end of the year we honor them?
So, not monthly?
That's what the motion said.
Okay.
Okay.
Gotcha.
Okay.
So just, this was also brought up by some of his colleagues that was wishing to offer something similar to Sergeant Janino. But you know what? Maybe after this, we can talk about setting, resetting that precedent so that it is only done at the end of the year, since we've already put it on the motion. Sound good? Pardon me? Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All in favor of the motion? So ordered.
Calendar item number 14, motion presented by Counselor McKenna that the City Council award a certificate of commendation to Doreen Trierenzo in recognition of her 50th year of training in the martial arts and her 43rd year of teaching martial arts in the city of Revere.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll save my comments for the next meeting when she appears. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Rizzo.
Again, because I won't be able to speak on the night of the presentation, I just want to say I've known, I've known Doreen for many of the years that she's been teaching here in Revere. She's accomplished so much within her particular occupation, her profession. She's at the extreme top of her game and has been for so many decades, so looking forward to the presentation.
Thank you. Any other counselors? And one of her greatest accomplishments, her protege is sitting at the end over there? All in favor? So ordered.
Calendar item number 15, motion presented by Counselor Rizzo that the mayor provide the City Council with information as to the number of all Revere residents currently working on the Suffolk Downs HYM project, including specific numbers for each and every local, including Local 22, 103, and other locals involved in the project for the PLA.
Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion basically speaks for itself. I've talked with some people that are involved with the project that feel as though that, I don't know, I'm assuming we still have the Revere Resident Monitoring Committee that monitors how many people from Revere are actually working on that job. One of the byproducts has always been that we put people to work in our community, and I'm told that that might not be the case. I don't know that it is or it isn't. I just want to get the numbers, so hopefully this motion will pass and speak for itself.
Any other counselors? Counselor Visconti.
Thank you. I couldn't agree more with this motion, you know, and I think this is some information that we need, and we should, you know, continue to update this on a regular basis, because, you know, when the developers come in here, they put in the requirement of residents, getting residents to work here and work in those projects. So we should be making sure that our residents get first preference. But I'm in support of this motion. Thank you.
Agreed. And if also, if I may speak from the chair, and I think that we all agree that we want to make sure that residents are getting their first choice in the Suffolk Downs site. I happened to call the plumbing local representative about a month ago before this motion, maybe six weeks ago, and I brought up a young man who contacted me and said, I'd like to get, and first of all, he wanted to get in the plumbing union. And this gentleman, who I didn't even think about, Revere, he said, "We need more Revere residents on the job." And I said, well, I referred this young man to him, former high school graduate, and he put him right on the Revere site as a union plumber, as an apprentice, but as a, in the union, and put him on the Revere site. And I asked him, I said, "Is he struggling to fill these positions?" He said, "We need more applicants." So I think that more often, we do need to get more Revere, young and old, residents that want to work in those trades on that site. So that'll be, if anyone does. So that'll be, if anyone does reach out to us, we can all, we all have good union contacts, and we can help set you up. Thank you. All in favor? So ordered.
Calendar item number 16, motion presented by Councilors Morbido and Silvestri that the City Clerk send a letter on behalf of the Revere City Council expressing our solidarity with the LGBTQIA+ community and to strongly denounce homophobic rhetoric in the actions and words stated by Saugus Selectmen Cogliano, which were published by the Saugus Advocate and Lynn Item News. Upon approval by the Revere City Council, the City Clerk shall send a letter to the Saugus Town Manager and members of the Saugus Board of Selectmen and Selectwomen to express our disappointment with Selectman Cogliano and denounce his toxic rhetoric.
Counselor Silvestri, and Counselor Morbido first? Counselor Morbido.
So last June, an event was held in the month of June to celebrate Pride Month in Revere and to support the LGBTQI community. Everyone came together, celebrating together, whether they were gay, straight, bi, trans, anything their heart felt. People of all backgrounds brought their friends, family, children, pets. Many came in support of the community, a community that has faced and still faces discrimination, ridicule, and intolerance. Whether it be verbal or physical, many face these hateful actions leading to isolation, loneliness, and suicide. No one deserves this behavior. When it was brought to my attention by Revere and Saugus residents that social media posts by a Saugus selectman contained public comments that are homophobic and toxic, I was appalled, appalled. Adding further insult, the selectman refused to apologize for his words when confronted by many, including the advocate and the Lynn Item. It is my belief, when you're an elected official, that the words spoken and written by an elected official should be chosen thoughtfully and to a high standard. Because an elected official, the people you, as an elected official, the people you represent chose you to be the voice and champion their issues. Bear with me, because I, I get a little emotional with this stuff because being a gay man, I know what I've experienced growing up in Revere, and I know what I've experienced just trying to be on the council and the notes I've received and the threats I received to step down and resign. So this hits close to me. So I, bear with, just give me a few more minutes. My colleagues, okay, are here tonight. Most of them know what I've been through in the past, and they know an elected official and the people you represent have chosen you to be the voice and champion for their issues. The words we speak and dictate matter, and offensive behavior is unacceptable. My colleagues have each received a copy of the articles concerning the statements and social media posts made by the selectmen. If you have not, I can forward you the article. And I ask yourself, after reading everything that I've sent you in those articles, I hope you can join me in admonishing this behavior. I believe my colleagues will not sink to this level of ignorance and hatred. Please join me in speaking out against this toxic rhetoric or let your silence question my good faith in your character and judgment. Thank you.
Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Counselor Morbido, for, for standing up and putting this motion. And thank you, Mrs. Lacentra, for, for bringing this to our attention. I believe we all are held to a higher standard at times. And, and at times, we can lose our cool, and at times, we can say things that, that might be offensive and, and, and it might not sit well with others. But there's a moment that we have to, we have to say, okay, you know what? I screwed up. I apologize. And I, and I'm sorry if I hurt you any harm or caused you any harm. And when the counselor or selectman refused to do so, that's when I have to speak up. Because he had an ability to, to recant, he had an ability to apologize, and he doubled down. And that's when we need to stand together and speak out against this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do respect my colleague. He knows that. Unfortunately, it's against the Constitution for us to speak, to send this letter that you want sent. I'm reading a headline from The Globe on March 7th. Supreme Judicial Court rules that free speech at public hearings includes the right to be rude, personal, disrespectful words. I, I appall what that gentleman said. I, I'm totally against everything he said. But we, as a council, cannot send a letter to a person without breaking the law. So it's, it's against the Constitution to send it. I wholeheartedly support my colleague in his sentiments, and I feel the same way he does, but I can't support this letter going out because it's against the rules.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to-
Counselor.
The gentleman to my left. Did you read all 29 pages of the court document? Because I did last night.
Well-
Do you know what originated? It originated from the council chambers and that someone would not let an audience member speak, and the council president at the time was rude and said some things he should not have.
I, I read-
So they deemed that legal and that he didn't do anything wrong. What's legal and what's right is what's right.
I agree, but we, as a body-
Counselor Zambudo.
Do not break the law.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors wish to speak? Any other councilors? I just, Counselor, I will be supporting you this evening, and I, I just want to say again, your courage, since I've been on this council, and I've just seen it grow and grow, and it's been, I'll stand behind you with your courage anytime. Thank you. Should we, should we do a roll call, madam, or all? I just, all in favor? All in favor? Opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 17, motion presented by Counselor Silvestri that the City Council request the Revere project team to, to develop a substantially different schematic design for a new Revere High School at the Wonderland site. The substantial changes should include, but not limited to, the number of playing fields on the site and reducing the cost of the overall project by as much as possible.
Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Ms. President. I know we all seen what transpired here earlier with the vote, but I will still stand by this motion. I thought that we were to work together as a team. I reached out to several councilors just a few days back and, and asked if they would come into this motion for me because I thought that was the best to do by the residents of the city. Bring the schematic design back, shave some numbers off the site, and let's get a high school built in the fastest time possible. I see that's not the will, but this is my motion, and I will let it stand there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Morbido.
And, and I stand beside my colleagues, so I know we may not have a majority, but I'm willing to vote for it because this is how strongly I feel that Wonderland will be more beneficial. And, may I add, I'm a lifelong resident who grew up in Shirley Ave, so I know the area. And sure, traffic can be brutal, but the area itself is perfect for a school and commuting. So I think it's going to be a perfect location.
Counselor Sorino.
Mr. President, through you to the clerk, if we have a roll call, that's fine. But is, would you rule this motion out of order based on the previous vote?
In my opinion, looking at the rules of order, Rule 26 would apply if it was the same thing coming. It's, this is asking that the school building committee revisit or take a look at that schematic design. What the City Council voted on and was defeated was the schematic design as presented. And this is asking them to change it.
Even based on the vote, sending it back to the current site tonight, the vote that we took a few minutes ago?
Well, it's up to the City Council to do what they will with this motion in front of you right now.
Okay, thank you.
I did ask for, if this was okay to be brought up, granted that. If it's the will of the maker of the motion for a roll call, we can call that, or if we'd like to put it in the committee? Okay, we'll call the roll.
Roll call on the motion, Counselor Cogliandro?
No.
No, Counselor McKenna?
No.
No, Counselor Morbido?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers? Yes, Counselor Rizzo?
No.
No, Counselor Sorino?
No.
No, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
No.
No, Counselor Zambudo?
No.
No, and Counselor President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the motion fails. Calendar item number 18, motion presented by Counselor Silvestri that the mayor request the DPW to change the fence slates on Route 16 South towards Chelsea. The graffiti has become a major eyesore at the gateway of the city. Counselor Zambudo is recused.
This motion speaks for itself. Whatever they can do, remove the slats, pressure wash, however we can clean that fence. It is actually City of Revere property. Thank you.
Any, any other councilors on the motion? All in favor? So ordered.
Calendar item, late motions. Calendar item number 19, motion presented by Counselor President Keith that the City Council award certificates of commendation to the sixth-grade boys' basketball team for winning the state championship. The team is coached by two recent high school graduates, Tyler Duggan and Ryan Beninati.
The motion speaks for itself. We'll present the team on the 3rd. All in favor of the motion? So ordered. This concludes the-
Mr. President? Mr. President, motion for a personal privilege.
Personal privilege by who?
We have a personal privilege.
Okay.
There was a member of-
Mr. Tucker?
Of the planning board that passed the law.
Yes, I apologize, correct. Before we conclude-
If we can have a moment of silence?
Mr. Tucker?
Thank you. If we could just ask for a moment of silence for Henry Truffaut, who was on the planning board for approximately 14 years? I'd ask that we have a moment of silence, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Tucker.
Mr. President, Wednesday, this Wednesday, the 29th, is Vietnam Veterans Day. We'll be honoring the Vietnam Veterans Day with a breakfast at Casa Lucia, 9:00. Everyone's welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Motion to adjourn? The next meeting will be April 3rd. Thank you.